I finally have a friend up here now.
You don't talk to me. You talk to each other.
While he has your head.
Okay, while he has your head. No.
We should chant. I, well, about 20 years ago. Yeah, right. Can I do that one to start fans in the center?
Welcome, everybody. And we will start if you're ready.
You ready?
Are you ready, Mr. Sawyer? He is. Welcome, Suzanne.
Thank you. Mayor Levy.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey.
Here.
Carlson. Matthews.
Here.
Mella.
Here.
Sawyer.
Here.
Schaefer.
Here.
Thank you.
Thanks, Suzanne. If you'll all rise and join me in the pledging allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. We have no ceremonies tonight for the first time in a while, and no additions or deletions. We'll move on to the consent calendar, Suzanne.
Thank you, Mayor Levy. This evening on the consent calendar, we have four items for council's approval, beginning with the minutes of the last council meeting, March 19th. We have a contract that needs approval for consulting services for Martin &amp; Martin, for the infrastructure for Woodland Station, and then we have a construction contract with Smith Construction in the amount of $138,579 for the reconstruction and paving of the city streets, and then a construction contract with A1 Chip Seal in the amount of $319,620 for the chip and seal resurfacing of the city streets in 2015.
Great, thanks, Suzanne. Questions, Council?
Well, Bill, just a quick question, since these just came up tonight. Anything new or out of the ordinary about these amounts and what was, you know, from what we were expecting?
Nope. These are right in line with the budgets and what our estimates are.
Okay.
And we're right on schedule for doing our annual street maintenance. Martin &amp; Martin contract is for infrastructure for Woodland Station that'll support the Aquatic Center, finish those negotiations.
Great. Thank you.
Anyone else need a motion to approve? Don't move. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Harvey.
Yes.
Levy.
Yes.
Matthews.
Yes.
Mella.
Yes.
Sawyer.
Yes.
Schaefer.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 6-0.
Thanks, Suzanne. No unfinished business tonight. We're gonna move on to number eight, ordinances on initial posting, and we're gonna consider ordinance number 1238. And Sally Riley, welcome.
Thank you. This is initial posting for a conditional use permit that has been requested by Court Wall, who recently purchased property on South Boundary Street, and he is looking to lease this property for a variety of uses. So this is a little bit different than what we've had for a conditional use in the past. This is to provide him flexibility in order for him to be able to lease either for contractor service and construction services, auto repair, wholesale trade, commercial warehouse and storage, and to single-family residential's that are on site. We would request that you approve ordinance 1238 on initial posting, setting the public hearing for April 16th.
Counsel, we usually don't discuss this too much. Does anybody have anything before we approve this on initial posting?
Just a quick question, not to belabor. Any initial feedback from neighbors or anything about this at this point?
We had one neighbor come to the planning commission meeting who was in support of this project.
Thank you.
And I had one more question. Are the two residences occupied now?
One of the residences occupied. The other is vacant.
Anything else?
The other residence is habitable? The one that's...
The vacant one needs some work.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you. We'll go for a motion, then.
A motion to consider ordinance number 1238 on initial posting for conditional use permit to allow various mixed use under Section 1809,090, including appliance repair and household improvements, la-la-la-la.
Thank you. Second?
As presented.
As presented. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Thank you. Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Mella?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Sally. Okay, we'll move on to public hearings. Before we do that, I have an announcement. Council members use electronic devices to access the materials relevant to the public hearing before us. Be assured that it is the common practice of this city council that these devices are not being used for texting, emailing, or other communications during the public hearing. And we'll start with Kip on approving ordinance number 1236. Thanks, Kip.
Thank you. Good evening. Ordinance 1236 increases bulk water rates as well as makes them adjustable with the Consumer Price Index. Currently, bulk water rates are reviewed, I would say, on an annual basis, but we haven't changed the bulk water rate since 2010. This ordinance sets up a rate increase of $2 from the current rate, from $13 to $15 per 1,000 gallons. Bulk water fees are basically a flat fee charge. We basically charge per 1,000 gallons. There's no tiered structure. The code refers to them as special purchases. Kind of put it into perspective for you is bulk water sales accounts for the last three years has accounted for less than 1% of our total water. Of that 1%, we believe 63% of it has been taken outside city limits where the other 37 is used inside city limits for projects. Basically, recommendation to increase bulk water rates, $2 from $13 to $15 per 1,000 gallons, and make it so they're adjustable with the Consumer Price Index like all their other fees. Any questions?
Thanks, Kip.
How often is the CPI adjusted? Is it yearly also?
Annually.
Annually also? Okay, it's not.
And how is it determined to increase it by that amount?
We, to, that's what all the other fees are based off, is the 75%. And that was determined some time ago. It was, to my knowledge, it was the basis for the utility to try to do our best to not increase the full CPIU and make it so our rates are a little bit more affordable.
Okay. So you're comfortable with, I mean, the CPI. Bottom line is that by doing 0.75, you're anticipating that over time it's, quote, fairer than... Because obviously, if the Fed increases rates later this year, as many anticipate, then we might be seeing an increase in inflation.
We only increase them once a year. That increase happens April 1st, based on the CPIU. The reason we did the $2 more before the annual adjustment is to make it so it was equitable and fair to our existing outside sea limit customers, because those rates adjust annually where the bulk water fees didn't before.
Good. Thank you. And didn't we talk about changing our process to 100% of the CPIU possibly next year?
Yeah, in 2016, that will be brought to council.
So I have a question, Kip. I know this is bulk water, and it's not very much, but when we do a 1,000 gallon increments, or what about if someone does 1,500? How do you calculate it that way? Or do you just divide it? I mean, is it, or mostly people come in 1,000 increments?
They, we rely on the honor system in bulk water hauling. So if a bulk water hauler comes and he says he takes 2,500 gallons and the next day he's at 3,000, just take the tally over the course of the month.
Yeah, it's not very much. I mean, it's very minimal for us.
But they use, I've seen meters that they connect to the... Can you comment?
Yeah, some have meters, some do it by just load counts. So like, for example, a bulk water hauler with his truck, he knows he's got a 3,000 gallon tank. And when he's empty, he fills up. He knows he's take 3,000 gallons, he records that. So we don't have meters for every customer that's a bulk water user. Some have meters, some do not.
Does anyone else have a little bit of a... On a magnitude scale, it's next to nothing, of course, but just in terms of fairness and kind of a regulatory oversight, we don't use the honor system for anything else in terms of utilities, do we?
No.
No, but we are looking also at the possibility of having a bulk water selling station in order of magnitude $30,000.
Yes.
That's a lot of money to spend to keep track of things. Even water meters themselves can be bypassed. The honor system hasn't caused us harm, we don't believe. There's enough people in the community that keep an eye on others. So we've had the water haulers that self-police. We've had to watch them as well. It's one of those things that it's just probably not worth the effort. It probably would cost more to monitor it, so it'd be penny wise and pound foolish, we believe.
Thank you.
Are these outside purchasers private or commercial, or both?
I don't know exactly where all the water goes. I would say the majority of it goes to homeowners outside city limits that are on cisterns.
Okay, so they come with a cistern to be filled?
No, I'm sorry. They have these, you may have seen these huge trucks. I think one's called Gold Hill Water. And one of the places I've seen them is they pull up behind the Langstaff Brown there. And he, the one I've seen has a meter, because I used to manage the clinic there. And he would just crank that thing up and sit there, and it would fill up, and then he distributes those out to residential.
But that would not keep someone that has a 150 gallon tank in the back of their pickup from filling up either. So it's a mix of both. Plus, it's also construction water for dust control and things like that.
Construction projects around the city.
So it is potable?
Yes.
Okay.
Our biggest, one of our biggest users is the Bible College right now, with all the construction. They simply, we limit it to one fire hydrant, the one behind Langstaff Brown and Walnut. But if there's a special project, instead of them tracking mud all throughout town, we let them use a fire hydrant right next to the project site.
Thanks for that detail.
I'm not against this at all, Kip. I was just curious how this worked. And so they would, if they went to pay, they just come in here and write a check at the front desk?
No, they're sent, they're sent to bill. They set up an account. We have a deposit on meters, and all that's tracked.
Oh, okay. Interesting.
Thank you.
And I would just add too, the construction water, that's something that our construction inspector keeps a pretty close eye on.
Okay.
He's watching the types of equipment and that they have an accounting system, and he checks them.
Interesting.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, this is a public hearing. If anybody would like to step forward and comment, this would be a good time. If not, we will call for a motion to approve ordinance number 1236.
Motion to approve ordinance 1236.
Second.
Thank you. Suzanne?
Matthews?
Yes.
Mella?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Kip.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on, and we'll have Sally on 9B on approving ordinance number 1237.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, just a point of order. Since I was on planning commission and ruled on this, I haven't had a chance to speak with the city attorney, but in speaking with Sally, we kind of concluded that it would be wise for me to recuse myself, since I've already ruled once, and, you know, having the same person rule on it twice, it might be prejudicial. I think the city attorney, I could hear her saying that. So in abundance of caution, I'll be recusing myself on this.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
You bet.
Sally?
Thank you. This is...
Well, like, just one second, Sally. I can see other council members looking at me going, "Well, why isn't he leaving the dais?" Usually when we recuse, we ask that participant, "You don't have a direct financial gain, do you, to this particular project?"
No, absolutely not.
And, Mr. Mayor, I don't see a problem with Mr. Mella remaining as long as he does not vote in this activity, if that's okay with the council.
If that's okay. Yeah, that's fine with me.
It's fine with me.
Thank you. Could we... Is he allowed to ask questions?
No, I won't say anything.
No questions, nothing, zipos are open?
I mean, I've been through it.
Right.
I voted.
Thank you.
You bet.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a conditional use permit with a site plan review for a new addition to the Big O Tire site. This is their existing facility that currently has five bays. It's about 8,800 square feet. It has a lower level and an upper level that is just used for storage or warehousing at this time. And we'll start with a zoning map that shows you that this is located on Chester Avenue. It is zoned community commercial. An auto repair shop is a conditional use permit in this area, and it's a site plan review because of the new building that will be placed on this site. The new building is 3,090 square feet. And in the audience is the architect Keith Meyer, as well as the store manager Robert Smith. The owner, Mr. Coldenhoven, had planned on being here, but unfortunately, he got called to an emergency in New Mexico and was unable to be here. They have owned this property since 2008. It was originally built as an auto car wash and detailing shop. And you can see from the aerial that this is the site. The portion of the tract that will be built upon is on the southern end of Lot 5. It is a total of four lots. The first four lots were combined a number of years ago when the original building was built. As part of this project, they will be vacating the last lot line to Lot 5, so they will all be combined as one lot. The surrounding properties are quite a mix of uses. In fact, there is an existing auto body shop to the north, Daryl's Auto Body on Chester. There's also the veterinarian on Chester, as well as a retail across the alley. And the alley is constructed to function as a service drive for many of these businesses off the alley, as well as Sonic. And then across Baldwin Street is a office building, two office buildings. And then, of course, McDonald's immediately south and adjacent to this property. Here's another view of the tires store and the area with which they are going to construct this L-shaped, five-bay building. The site plan that was in your packet shows the existing building, the new structure with two bays tucked in close to Baldwin Street, and then three bays that will be just opposite their existing three bays on this side. So these three new bays will open, and this will become a very efficient work area for Mr. Smith and his crews. And he can explain their demand and their increase in customers that they expect to see with this new addition. The parking is mostly existing, all the way around the existing building, and then in front and off the alley. I'll go into more detail about parking. The second sheet is mainly details for the dumpster enclosure that will be in the back of the property tucked up next to the new building. Here are the architectural designs for the new building. They will be similar to the existing building, so the same roof line with a metal roof, and then stucco siding with architectural details of stone and bump-out columns to match the existing columns on the original building. So we have the west elevation. This is what you would see from the alley, the two bays in the back, and then the three bays. This is, south elevation is what you would see from the McDonald's parking lot. It, too, has, is appointed with the columns and the stone. There will be landscaping on the five-foot strip between the timber wall that McDonald's owns and the new building. And then this building is tucked into the slope that abuts Baldwin Street. And there was an approved variance on the setback from Baldwin Street so that they are 10 feet off the street. And then also a three-foot variance off the side setback on the south elevation, so they will be five feet off the side lot line. And that, again, was approved by the Board of Adjustment in November. The landscaping for this site, the total lot area is a little bit over 35,000 square feet. 25% of the area is required to be landscaped, which is 87, almost 8,800, and that is what is provided. And what is somewhat unique about this site is that the landscaping for the car wash, when it was originally built, was included in the road right-of-way, so that there was the intent to have a very nice finished edge to this corner lot and have the sidewalk, as well as the landscaped islands, blend from the street right-of-way into the site. So we have placed a condition that the owner maintain all of the landscaping surrounding this property, including that within the road right-of-way. The conditional use has 11 criteria, which you're familiar with. And the first one is related to need. This is, has been an auto repair service facility since 19, or 2008. It has a high customer demand, which is why they are needing additional bays. The impacts have been addressed with shielded lights. The traffic has also been addressed with a traffic study, and the adjacent streets can handle this traffic easily. Noise that is mitigated because the garage doors basically are inward toward the center of the site. And from an aesthetic standpoint, this is a good design with nice landscaping. As far as not endangering the public welfare, this new construction is required to be built according to the International Building Code and must meet all the fire regulations, and will proceed into the building permit process from here. As far as not injuring the value of vicinity property owners, the properties surrounding are all commercial, so they are compatible in type. Mark Weaver, a broker for Accent Commercial Group, stated that he found that the new expansion and commercial improvements will not adversely affect the surrounding property owners and their property values. And that public notification process was completed. We had no members of the neighborhood contact us or attend the planning commission meeting. As far as harmony in the area, it does, this use does fit into the community commercial zone, was originally approved for a car wash and auto detailing center. The commercial mix is quite a variety, so this is really just expanding an existing use. And the landscaping along the southern wall will buffer that property between the McDonald's parking lot and this new building. Conforming to city plans, the comprehensive plan states that this is a mixed-use area, so it's compatible with a commercial use. And one of the primary guiding principles to the comprehensive plan is to sustain economic diversity and vitality. This will allow Mr. Coldenhoven and Mr. Smith to sell more tires and serve more customers. From a city regulation standpoint, it has been reviewed by city staff for compatibility to the zoning regulations and finds that it meets all the requirements, as well as it will comply with the International Building Code and fire regulations through the building permit process. With respect to traffic, a trip generation letter was provided. Five bays will generate, according to the international transportation criteria, 62 trips per day on average. The original traffic study with the car wash was 254 trips, so quite a bit more. And if we were to extrapolate those trips and double it, because there are five existing bays, we're looking at about 124 average daily trips for both the old and the new facility. Bill Alsbach has looked at the traffic study and believes that the streets, the existing streets and intersections, can easily accommodate the traffic, and no improvements are required. With respect to drainage and the topography, there was an analysis done by Matrix Design Group for the drainage. There was an existing detention facility that was placed underground to handle the runoff of the old site. And with this new site, there will be a new trench that will be put in place with another underground tank in order to handle the drainage off the new building and the asphalt. With regard to the water and wastewater and solid waste disposal, the building, the existing building is served with city water and sewer. These five new bays are not planned to be connected to the city water and sewer. They have restrooms and cleaning facilities in the existing building that will accommodate their needs. IREA has reviewed this and is requesting easements to be established along Baldwin Street and between the side lot line for any future potential electrical connections that are needed there. The solid waste will be handled within an enclosed dumpster on the site. Their old tires will be stored in the main building and will be picked up weekly, so there will not be any outside storage of old tires. The air quality is minimally impacted, and we've already discussed drainage. To prevent it being from danger to the public, again, the proposed development will not create any significant hazards. It will be in compliance with all the building codes. And finally, criteria 11. With architectural design, new building is compatible with the main structure with matching materials and colors. The final lighting will be a full cutoff, so to minimize any light pollution or glare, and that the proposed elevation... and that the proposed elevation complies with the standards. And since this is a site plan review as well, the standards that are A through G are exactly the same as the conditional use criteria, numbers five through 11, so we've opted not to repeat that. But we do need to mention that the design standards that are in section 1833 point 180, we do need to touch upon and those are, begin with the building placement and site layout. It complies with good building siding because it is constructed on the existing grade of the building so that these area between the two bays will be at the same grade. The L shape takes advantage of this lot that's 150 feet deep. The new garage doors will be accessible from the interior of the lot. There are minimized cut and fills. There's a 45-foot separation between the new building and the main building, which gives a good spacing pattern between the buildings. And there are no topographic features that are, present any problems. With respect to orientation, the garage doors face inward to the site. The outward walls are designed with the rock and the columns, so they're nicely accented with a comparable roof, green metal roof. The height will not interfere with any view corridors. Shadows will not be cast onto the adjacent buildings. And the building, the primary building continues to be the prominent feature on the site. With respect to mass, scale and proportion, the new building is smaller than the main building by about two-thirds. Its mass and height are in scale with the context of the neighboring properties. Architectural design, we've mentioned that this is designed in a unified architectural manner using rock, stucco, timber and metal roofs. There's no highly reflective materials. The colors blend well with the natural surrounding and the architectural character is enhanced with the columns, gable roof and rock wainscoting. Also, there are no blank walls being proposed. The exterior lighting will comply with the city standards. The mechanical room will be located in the building, so there won't be mechanical equipment on the roof or on the sides. And the stone block retaining wall will be retained in the back by Baldwin Street. With that, the staff and the planning commission recommend approval of ordinance 1237. We have three conditions with sub portions behind, underneath those conditions. The first is that prior to a zoning development permit being issued, the plans all need to be finalized. So, we have a final site plan, utilities and grading plan, landscaping plan, architectural elevation, stamped drainage plans and a final lighting plan. Number two is that prior to certificate of occupancy, the vacation of the interior lot line will be completed to combine the two lots and there are no easements associated with this lot line. That the public utility easement that IREA has requested is established and any new signage is a separate zoning development permit. And they probably will add some wall signage, which is well within the sign code for them to do on this new building. And then added conditions to this conditional use is no outdoor repair of vehicles will be allowed, no outside storage of damaged or junk motor vehicles or parts. All landscaping areas within the surrounding road rights of way shall be maintained by the owner. And then the planning commission added a, another item here, that the second story be maintained as warehouse only because, my parking slide, I think got skipped. But the parking requirement for this site would, if we looked at our parking standards straight on, would be for 36 spaces. They are proposing 31 spaces through an alternate parking plan. Staff and the planning commission were quite comfortable with the alternative parking plan because of the turnover of the customers and the operation with which they sell tires, put them on a car and that a customer is gone. So, it's not a repair shop that houses vehicles there for long periods of time. And Mr. Smith can explain this more, but they have a quick turnover of their customers and also their employees have, either they get dropped off or they're not as, they carpool together and their employees do not take up very many of the parking spaces. So, we believe that the 31 parking spaces were quite adequately and we have not observed problems on this site for parking in the past. But the planning commission and staff felt it was important that the upper story of this building may be maintained as warehouse storage as opposed to something that would be office or would generate more parking needs. So, with that, we would recommend approval after public comment in 1237. And as I said, the applicant is here to help answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Sally. Thanks very much. Council questions for Sally before we bring up Mr. Smith and Mr. Meyer?
Sally, I do have a question. The south side, the five-foot expansion there, are they going to put a gutter on the roof?
There will be drainage gutters on the roof so that that will be directed down. And here is the trench that will collect that runoff and then it will go into a detention holding tank and released at historic rates into an underground system that runs under the alley.
Okay, great, because I could see that as an issue with the McDonald's parking lot if, because you're sending all the rainwater into the McDonald's parking lots. That's good. The other thing was the recommendations for no repairs on vehicles outside. I can see them having a car there and jack up the car and pull the tire off to repair a tire. So, I just want to point that out. Once in a while, a car has a flat, they just jack it up, drop, take the tire off and take it inside and fix it. So, I don't know if that's a need for a condition.
We could ask Mr. Smith about that?
Yeah, we could. But, I mean, I've used the facility enough, so I, we all have. That's all I have.
Anyone else? Bill, I just had a question. Do you see any significant issues in traffic during the time of construction? No? Good. Okay, Sally, I appreciate it. Mr. Smith, Mr. Meyer, would you like to step forward and give us your name and your residence and?
Hello, I'm Robert Smith.
Keith Meyer, architect, Signworks Architecture.
Gentlemen, have a address just for the record, please?
684 Matterhorn Drive.
1230 King's Crown Road.
Great, thanks. Okay, Mr. Smith, you want to start by answering Noel's comment about?
Jacking the car up outside? We do do that occasionally, well, probably a lot more, you know, because we've got vehicles in the store, somebody comes in, have to get it done right away, so yeah, we do. And the other question that I have, we do service a lot of motor homes. Obviously, motor homes will not fit in either one of these buildings, you know, like putting tires on them. We don't do any mechanical work to them, but we do tire work to them. So, those would more than likely be serviced outside also.
Well, then I guess the question is, do you, are you, have any issues with the condition that said you could not do outside repair?
Not really on the flat repairs. On customers' vehicles, on the motor homes, yes. Because there is not a location up here in Willem Park that can service a motor home. So, we do do it. We do it outside. It takes priority over everything else and the customer waits on it and takes it when it's done.
And it's just tire repair?
Yeah, it's just tires. No oil changes, no service work, none of that on motor homes.
I think that was just a recommendation. It wasn't, it was a recommendation by staff, I believe.
Let Sally speak to that.
I think we really do need to then tweak this condition that would say it would be 3A. No outdoor repair of vehicles shall be allowed except for minor tire repairs.
Thank you.
As, as needed, if that's.
Can you bring up that slide where you did have the conditions? If you don't mind, I think it was just one back. There you go.
It would be right here that we would add, except for minor tire repairs as needed.
Thank you.
So, that would include cars? With the language you just suggested, it's not limited to RVs?
It's not limited to RVs.
I had another question too about water. Sally mentioned there were no bathroom facilities in the, in the plan for the new building. Is there not going to be any water bibs outside or any access to water?
There's water outside of the other building, right in that area.
Is that common?
We didn't plan on putting any water in there because for one, we don't need any bathrooms in there. There will never be any customers in that building, other than the employees.
It's not a condition that we can address here, but I just wondered if that's common practice in a, a maintenance facility, not to have any water?
Well, and like Scott said in the last meeting that we had, if it requires the water, the water will be in there. We had not planned on putting any in there.
It's not a requirement that we could levy on you, it's just a question I had, having run a couple of motor pulls in the Army.
Yeah.
Water's good.
Yeah, no, no, I know.
Just a question.
Anybody else?
I, I just have to say congratulations.
Yeah, absolutely.
That the fact you're heading on is, is great and.
Well, it's to better serve the community.
Yeah, glad to see it's growing and glad to see more customers are using you guys.
Yeah. Well, everybody probably knows how it is when you come in to get an oil change and it's like, well, it's going to be two hours.
Ah, been there, done that. Drop your car off, walk home.
Exactly.
And a nice design, Mr. Meyer?
It's pretty easy to match the existing building, so. Real thought into it, other than matching the columns and roof line and stuff like that.
I would just add too, both for you two and Sally, for the department, for a very, very thorough job of covering every little aspect and detail of this facility and making our job easy, really.
Yeah, it was a little bit of work getting to the drainage issue because of the way the site slopes and stuff like that. And we will hard pipe all the roof drains into the collection system. So, all that water that will come off the building onto the site would be overflowing in a very, very heavy dump or, everything else will be actually piped into the underground detention system.
And I, I had a question, I didn't realize we had an underground drainage system off of that street.
Yep, right down in front of them.
Detention system.
It's private, okay.
And Sally, were there any concerns from the businesses around there that it might add a little more traffic? Maybe they'd like that.
We, we did not hear any comments from the surrounding businesses. It's been posted, letters went out and, yeah, no comments. And they didn't comment during the, we also had the hearing for the setbacks variance and there was no comment that during that time as well.
The underground tank, is that, is tank the right word? Concrete?
Well, it's a large pipe.
Okay.
So, it's a large pipe that provides some detention volume and regulation of the flow out from that. And that's part of what their engineer has analyzed and some of the details of how that's all going to be worked and plumbed and fixed is still going to be worked through, but in the concept, I believe we have.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, all the calculations have been done and everything, but the engineering hasn't been completed. We're going to do that after we get this approval. But all the calculations and work that's been built, I think we've been through all that. It's a basic 60-inch pipe that's somewhere in the.
60?
Yeah, it's about a five-foot round pipe. It's probably 24-foot long, maybe even bigger, just for this building. There's already an existing 76-feet of pipe, 60-inch pipe underneath the other parking lot that holds all of it.
I do have another question for Sally on the design or whoever would like to answer that. The parking spots, spot between the new building and the road, there's a drop-off of three foot, did you say, or two-foot drop-off? In the past, I've driven by and, yeah, is there a, like a guardrail there or can a guardrail be put there? For some reason, my, I'm thinking that I've seen a car just hanging off the edge there in the past.
It goes from probably about a half-foot down in the bottom by Sonic up to probably, what, five feet at the other end.
Okay, I'm, I'm just worried about the parking spot because for some reason, I'm thinking I've seen a car hanging off the edge there.
No, there's five feet from the curb that's there right now to that wall.
To the timber wall.
Yeah.
We'll have to do a curb and gutter to.
A raised one so cars don't just drive right off?
Right.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, if not, do we have any public comment? Any questions? Okay, gentlemen, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay, Sally, thanks very much. We will call for a motion then to approve ordinance number 1237.
Right, with the changes in the.
With the changes and, and please include the findings in, in your motion, please.
Motion to approve ordinance 1237 on initial posting for conditional use permit with the changes of the outside maintenance of, of vehicles and motor homes.
And including the findings?
Included in findings?
And including the findings.
And included in the findings.
Thank you. You have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Okay, thanks Noel. Suzanne?
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you Suzanne. Sally, thank you. Mr. Smith, thank you very much. Clearly, you guys are doing this because of the great job that you have done the last six years or so. So, congratulations to you and Scott and keep up the good work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Sally.
Thank you.
We will move on. We have no new business tonight. I have no public comments on the item except for Deb Miller, who's going to come up and talk to us about one thing, I think. She's going to take my thunder away.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmen and women. On your desk tonight, you received a notice about our spring business expo that's coming up next Thursday night, April 9th. That's a personal invitation from the chamber to you all to come and attend. It's free to the public. We have 30-plus vendors that evening. It's a good time for people to come, see the businesses that are in our area. We promote this out to the public. This isn't necessarily a business-to-business like our after-hours, but this is promoted out to the local residents to get them to come out and visit with all the different vendors that will be there that night. And I have it on good authority, there's going to be good food there that night as well.
And correct me if I'm wrong, you're sold out?
We are sold out. We have six on the waiting list right now.
That's awesome. Always a good event. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move on to reports and start with me. First, I'm sorry that I didn't recognize Deputy Chief DeYoung. Thanks for being here tonight. recognize Deputy Chief DeYoung. Thanks for being here tonight.
Thanks, sir.
I only have one announcement, and that's Saturday, April eleventh, Woodland Park Winter Farmers Market. It's at the Cultural Center from nine to one. And I will move on to council reports and start with Mayor Proctor Harbinger. Say anything about charter review or no?
Well, we're into our, finished our second meeting last night with the charter committee review. We now have a full committee. We brought Val Carr into the committee last night and have discussed and actually come to resolution on a couple of issues that we will probably submit as possible ballot initiatives next spring. Spent some, some bit of time last night discussing a section of our charter that currently prohibits incentives for development within the city limits. And eventually, we'll come to consensus on some wording about that particular issue and, and bring that to a ballot initiative as well. And again, those meetings are open to the public. The next one is on May the sixth, and we're moving right along.
Thanks. Great discussion last night, too. Ken?
I have nothing. It was a good meeting last night, though, I will say.
Phil, welcome.
Thank you. No comments at this point. Thanks.
All right, I have a story to tell.
Oh, no.
So, my son and I, we went over to Carmen's the other night, and I just happened to pick up a jackpot as I was walking into Carmen's. And I sat down and I'm looking at it and going, wow, interesting. There's this huge underground road, and it's like, okay, interesting. My son's looking at his cellphone. And so, I turn the page and I'm, I'm reading Walmart might move for bypass. Counsel goes into emergency last-minute session, and I'm going, what in the heck is going on here? I, I'm on council. I don't remember us going into executive session. So, the waitress comes over and she kinda chuckles and she goes, she moves it over a couple more pages, and she goes, read that. And I was like, ah, I totally got busted. So...
What you can do telling us all this.
I didn't read too far into it. It wasn't like I fell for it all. The other thing is, is I have some friends that live in Gypsum and Eagle, and we were talking about the council there. And I'm gonna look into this, but they get a stipend of seventy dollars for going to council meetings. So, I'm gonna look into that a little bit more and see if that's a possibility where, if we come to council meetings, that we get paid to be here.
There's a bit of history if I could.
Yeah, I would love to hear it.
Sure. There, in the eighteen years that I've been here, I think twice, it's gone before a vote of the folks to see if our council members should be paid.
Okay.
And it has been voted down every time. And it may not have gone, someone, some of you may have better history, and it may not have gone to a vote of the people or the council decided not to send it. Yes, sir?
No, I was on council at the time. In fact, it was my suggestion that it be considered, and I did stipulate after I was off council. So, there was no proverbial Tammany Hall feather-ridding. And, but it was handily defeated, and so, I know there was a previous attempt, and that was also defeated. So, the only thing I can say is the Springs vote to attempt to do this was defeated eighty percent to twenty, and ours was more like sixty-two percent. So, and they also asked, instead of the stipend in the Springs, which is sixty-two fifty now, instead of going up incrementally, they went up to forty-eight thousand, half of the mayor's pay.
What?
Well, the mayor gets, the new strong mayor system they get, executive gets ninety-six thousand. So, the council thought we should get half.
Right, 'cause they only get seven thousand.
They get sixty-two fifty right now for being on council. The mayor gets ninety-six thousand. So, they, they attempted it. So, these things have been, you know, attempted. You know, my theory, just to kinda dovetail on what you were saying, Mr. Sawyer, is that it's more uncommon for council members not to be paid a stipend, not just in Colorado, but generally. And, and so, it's a recognition of the time, the commitment. And my argument was also that we would, I think, arguably have fewer non-competitive races. That if you had three open seats, you might get six people. Because if you get, you know, folks who are able to do this without any kind of remuneration, you might arguably preclude people like firefighters, teachers, police officers, who might be more inclined to participate if there were a nominal stipend provided to, to help that. So, that was my argument, which unfortunately did not prevail.
Well, I don't see, I don't see a problem looking at it.
No, as a matter of fact, it came up last night and it's one of the issues that we might consider in our charter review, because that's where it's, it's contained. I actually got a couple of Snickers, but we'll look at it as part of the review process.
Right now, they get seventy dollars a meeting. It's not a huge amount of money. If you don't show up for the meeting, you don't get, you don't get paid. I mean, it's the craziest thing.
Government, right?
So, I'll look into it and, and see what their, their rules say. I mean, it's, it's not, it's not gonna hurt anything to look.
It's contained in their charters.
Yeah, okay.
Anything else?
No, that's, I admitted to the world that I fell for the April Fools, so not put that in the paper.
It's too late.
Just don't do it two years in a row.
Yeah, exactly. I'll be ready next year. John?
I have one announcement. We have invited the state demographer, Elizabeth Garner, to come talk to us about our local and forecast demographics. And so, that session is gonna be held on April fifteenth at four o'clock here. And so, we would encourage those of you who might have an interest in what the forecasts are for population, seniors, jobs, and these kinds of things, I would encourage you to attend. April fifteenth, four P M.
Thanks, John.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Smith's not with us tonight, so we'll move on to Mr. Butterby.
Prior to Mr. Fleer coming up for his monthly report, I would just want to bring you up to date on an activity that the mayor mentioned at the last meeting, and that was the presentation to the Department of Local Affairs, reference our grant request for the fleet maintenance facility. And I'm thrilled to announce that DOLA saw the merits of our project and has awarded the city eight-hundred-and-seventy-four-thousand-seven-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars for the effort for the fleet maintenance facility. Our DOLA regional representative paid me a personal visit to share that news with me. He said that the packet and the presentation in all the years he's been doing this was certainly one of the best that he had ever seen. So, once again, my thanks to a team effort to pull this together, primarily Brian putting the packet together with Bill's help and Wally's help, and Bill making the presentation in front of DOLA. This is huge. It's a huge recognition of this great project that will be behind the scenes, but will absolutely benefit our community with the operational readiness of our vehicles to help take care of the city. It's huge. So, my thanks to all of you for making this work.
Have we received larger grants in the past, or is this the largest one that you know?
Wow.
Ten seconds.
Sally, Bill?
Oh, that's true. FEMA for the flood, we got about one-point-nine million.
One-point-six-million-dollar grant for the Fountain Creek project that we completed last year.
Yeah. That's, that's true. And then, in the years past, we've gotten GoCo grants for workout at Meadowwood Sports Complex. I don't know that any have been that large. We've had some that have been in the multiple hundreds of thousands. The baseball field was four-hundred thousand or so. But, if it's not the largest, it certainly is timely.
Well, I'd just like to reiterate what I said last meeting and what David just said. I was fortunate to be able to go to the presentation, and Bill was outstanding. So, thank you very much. And I know Brian had a lot to do with it, but it was just great to watch, and congratulations to everybody in this room and in this city. We'll all benefit from that.
And with that, we'll ask Brian to give us his monthly update.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And, and just on a note, you don't, when we get the awards, we don't, we're not quiet, strike by the iron side. We will be submitting another community development block grant for Woodland Station. And a lot of what we're doing is getting noticed by both DOLA and Office of Economic Development International Trade. So, and some of that relates to, if you're, you know, we know about the Main Street program. We got appointed for that. We're, we're gonna be going into a tax credit period with America West Housing Solutions, and it does help that we have this interactive process with staff. And quite frankly, they know, Denver knows that we have our act together here, and it helps. So, and I appreciate the, the council and fellow staff members as we continue to make those efforts, because we will have more wins as a result of the activity that you support and, and the staff obviously supports as we move forward. Some quick hits, I-
Brian, I'm sorry. Before you move on, on, on the grant, the fleet maintenance, it was council's confidence in us moving forward with that as a council, as a, a capital project, that along with Memorial Park and the Aquatic Center. So, I failed to thank you for having the trust in us to let us move forward with those projects with confidence. So, thank you. Please.
Thank you, David. And again, as a result of a CDBG grant, the hospital project, four-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand, that project mobilized with paid construction this week. They're gonna be doing the boring under the highway, and then they're gonna start on the Wamac side and kinda work what we think is backwards, but under the highway and then around the hospital, and then they'll end up where the skilled nursing facility is with that water line. And that'll meet all the requirements. What's important, in terms of economic development effort, obviously, and future expansion of the hospital, they'll have all the, the infrastructure in place to expand to their fullest within that campus. So, we're excited about that, and certainly the hospital and those that'll be investing in the future will be. Main Street Council, you'll recall that in the budget process, you approved a part-time position for the Main Street Coordinator. Our Main Street Board, we had a four-person steering committee for the hiring of that Main Street Coordinator. We conducted our interviews last week. We're doing that vetting this week, and we'll bring that nomination to the board next week. They'll have to go through their normal employee background check, and with the city manager blessing, we hope to announce that position next week. So, we'll keep you updated, and at the appropriate time, we'll bring that person to council for an introduction. So, we're excited about that. Also, I had mentioned the Enterprise Zone. We are, Deanne McCain with the El Paso County Economic Development Group did present our collective letters of support, and they were received by the Colorado Economic Development Commission. We are now on the clock, in about three months, actually, June thirtieth of this year, we have to have an application. We'll be working with Victor Cripple Creek, county commissioners, and some others to get that application. And, and again, I'll bring that to council for review and approval before we, we submit that to the state. But again, it's a, an exciting opportunity to, to bring additional investment into our county and city. Woodland Station, I'll just, I'm just glad to say that we're moving through the process with family entertainment, working very nicely with the city, primarily the city manager as the, as the spearhead about the placement of the family entertainment bowling facility. We wanna take full advantage of coming down center, if you imagine, from twenty-four looking south at the Aquatic Center and how the aquatic, the bowling facility is placed. You get one shot at that. Once it's built, it's done. And so, we wanna make sure that we've done it well. And again, working with staff on engineering, you approved the engineering contractor consultant tonight that'll continue to move forward with NES and Tim Seibert. So, we'll continue to update council as to what that looks like from a design review, as well as, and again, trying to blend with aquatic, the aquatic facility so that it looks like we had some interactive activity with that, both projects. And then finally, the, in workforce housing initiative, you're familiar with America West Housing Solutions, our nonprofit that we created. As of yesterday, we submitted a letter of intent to submit a nine-percent tax credit proposal to CHAFA. You recall the Willows, it was a forty-two-unit project on the corner of Highway sixty-seven in Valley View. We brought it down to twenty-four units, in what we call, in a single building, what we call a big house design. We'll be presenting that. In fact, you, you heard from Keith Meyer, who's on our board. John, John and I and Keith are on the board. Keith will be doing some initial design elevation drawings that we'll be presenting, and again, to both the planning department and council, so you can get a view of what that looks like. What we learned, as you recall, that was a private developer that did it initially. It was not approved by CHAFA. But, we spent a lot of time with them, understanding what their concerns and what their requirements are. And I, I think we'll have a very strong application going forward. And again, I'll keep the council updated on the progress of that as we move forward. But, we're excited for that as an initial project with America West. What questions or comments can, can I address further with council? Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
You bet.
Okay. Anything else from council before we move on? Okay, we have one bit of correspondence relative, John, to community investment. Got a nice thank-you note from Craig Harms and the Woodland Park Win Symphony for the fifteen-hundred-dollar commitment from the CIF. So, thank you very much. Nice letter from them. I think that's all we have tonight. So, this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you very much for being with us.